September 27, 2022. Meeting is now called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call for municipal council regular meeting of September 27, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. Councilman Abdaaliziz. Councilwoman Mencan.
Here.
Councilwoman Davila.
Present.
Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mendez.
Good evening, Patterson. Present, Madam Clerk.
Good evening. Councilwoman Memes.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Good evening. Councilwoman Udine. Councilwoman Velez.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. President and honorable council members, this evening we have with us to render the prayer. For tonight's meeting is Elder Winnie Harrison, and she's from the Open Door Christian Fellowship Ministry, and she's a member of the Patterson Operation Seafire. Also, the leaders in the flag salute is the Honorable Councilman Alex Mendez, who's the Vice President. At this time, I ask everyone to please rise for the prayer and the flag salute. And thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Oh God, our Father, we thank you for this time. We thank you for this moment. We thank you for your presence. But before we give thanks, oh God, we ask you to forgive us for any thought or deed that was not according to your will and to your mercy, oh God. We ask you to touch this council today, oh God. Let them speak the articles of what you want them to do in the legislation. Let each council be accorded, do according to his will and to his purpose, oh God. Let this city be crowned with your glory, oh God. Cover them in the name of Jesus. God, we ask you to bless them, each and every one that stand on the podium to ask for a word from you, God. Let it be in decency and in order, oh God. And let each and every heart be open according to your spirit. And God, even as they do what they have to do, a yes or a no, oh God. Let it be for the people and not for themselves. God, we ask you to continue to strengthen them as one body, oh God, from the head to, from the first to the last, oh God. Let they be one according to who you are. And let your spirit continue to ever increasingly inflow, oh God. And let each and every one of them be able to say amen and yes and amen, because you are their head and the source of all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everyone, please remain standing. We will now have a moment of silence for our troops and those who have lost loved ones. Thank you. Everyone could have a seat. Madam Clerk, please read the statement of compliance.
Yes, Mr. President. Open Public Meetings Law, 2022 to 2023, meeting dates, September 27, 2022, time, 7:00 p.m. Adequate notice of this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. One, the annual notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council was compiled for the year 2022 to 2023, or about July 1, 2022. Two, a schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2022 to 2023 was duly transmitted on or about July 1, 2022 to the North Jersey Herald News, The Record, The Arabic Voice, Italian Voice, Biscay County Pulse, Dominican News, Kis Kater International, El Especial, The Patterson Press, The City Post News, and Tap into Patterson, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2022 to 2023 was prominently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor, in the place reserved for the announcements of this type. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2022 to 2023 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. Five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome, sir.
Call for the payments of bill for September 27, 2022. Madam Finance Chair.
My apologies, Council President. I got a little distracted. I didn't hear what you said.
Payments of bills.
Okay. To all the council members, you received your summary of disbursements this weekend, on Friday. The bills list is $2,401,697.01, of which $700,000 is for solid waste. And there was no payroll this week. If there isn't any questions pertaining, there was no Board of Education payment, neither nor sewer. At this time, I make a motion for payment of bills in the amount of $2,401,697.01.
So move.
I moved it.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Velez. Roll call on payments of bills.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call for payment of bills, amount of $2,401,697.01. Councilwoman Mencan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
To the public, once again, for probably the 1,000th, possibly 10,000th time. This is just another example of poor spending, irresponsible spending. Repaying a garbage company that offers the absolute worst service, possibly in the state of New Jersey. We continuously pay them. We have yet to hold them accountable for the poor service that they render. And I, once again, will not be a part of that. So I cannot vote any affirmative for this bills list. And Madam Clerk, while we're at it, since this went through finance, I requested several months ago, a full report and a status on disbursements for the expenditures at Hinchcliffe Stadium. We still have not received it. Just want to put that on record, once again, and my vote is no.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've been having a lot of problem with the garbage collection throughout the city. But today, we received a great news of the DPW Committee. We've been working extensively, having the conversation, to create three different zones, to have multiple companies participating on the garbage collection. We have the good news that we have around six or seven companies that already are participating on the bid, the pickup package. So very soon, we're going to have new companies, multiple companies in town, collecting our garbage and doing a much better job. So, and we've been working for the longest at the DPW Committee meeting. So I'm looking forward to seeing new companies in the city doing the job that we deserve. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Memes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Picking back Councilman Mendez's statement, that's correct, Mendez. But one thing I hear is the payment of bills. We had contracts to be responsible to pay the bills. The administration is responsible to make sure those contracts are being run the proper way. So our responsibility is to vote for the payment of bills. My vote is yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is seven in favor, one against, one absent. Payment of bills, the amount of $2,401,697.01 is hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk, we'll take consent agenda item 18 to 37 now.
Yes, Mr. President. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda items. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. The items listed on the consent agenda are numbers 18 through 37. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. So move.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Memes, and Councilwoman Velez. Roll call on consent agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on consent agenda items 18 through 37. Councilwoman Mencan?
Madam Clerk, pass for a minute.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Memes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Velez?
Early night, my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Mencan?
We're back to you.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
We went fast.
I know. It sure did. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Items 18 through 37 on the consent agenda items are hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk, we'll now open up the public portion.
Yes, Mr. President.
How many speaker do we have, Madam Clerk?
One second, Mr. President.
How many?
Seventeen.
First speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, the public portion is now open, and our first speaker is Ms. Tatiana Portago.
Good evening. Council President.
Yes, good evening.
Is it working? Yeah. Okay. Good evening. I have been working on an initiative to introduce runoff elections for future elections.
Council President?
Yes.
My apologies, but you're giving the back to the council, and you're addressing the council. So on TV, you're also giving your back to everyone that's watching you.
I understand. I was just also speaking to the both.
Yeah, they will watch you anyway.
Yeah, they can see you.
Yeah.
Continue, please.
You can address the council as you please, whatever suits you best. There's no requirements.
I agree. Councilwoman Jackson, I defer, and I think it's a disrespect.
To who?
You're addressing the council. That's why you come here.
And also, the public who watching in the house, they cannot see your face.
I understand, but there's also some people here.
Look at the screen. If you look the other way, you'll be back. Councilmember, please, point of orders, please. Continue.
Can I please have my three minutes start over?
Start the time.
Start the time again, Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk? Please start the time over again.
I didn't, no, I didn't start it yet, Mr. President.
Oh, good.
I didn't. No, I didn't start it yet. I gave her some time.
Go ahead, Ms.
To those at home and to those in the public. Good evening. I have been working on an initiative to introduce runoff elections for future elections, and I would encourage those listening to look into what runoff elections are exactly all about. It made me realize, and I wanted to remind all Patterson residents, because voting season is starting up, that we are the only ones here to hold those in power accountable. And I think it's apparent that not all those in power here belong in power here. Unfortunately, I recognize how disencouraged we as a community are with not only the state of our city, but how at times helpless we feel to accomplish anything meaningful to help it. I realize it's this discouragement that those who do not belong in power, but have it, are banking on in order to keep that status that hold. We have a mayor who received just 30% of all votes. We have more effort from private citizens and nonprofit organizations to reach city voters than our own city hall has. Our local government needs to do more, and we have to hold them to it. And it starts, obviously enough, with our vote, because it's the only voice they hear, the only language they speak, apparently. I want our residents to start playing the game. I will be here and outside. I have the petitions with me. If anybody already knows maybe what runoff elections are, but again, I encourage you to read into it. And I also encourage the council to also reconsider adding it onto this November's ballot, because it can be put on by you by ordinance. And it's something that we all can only vote on. So, good night.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker is Bridget Arick. Bridget?
Good evening, everyone. Bridget Arick, representing Patterson Public Schools, 90 Delaware Avenue in Patterson, New Jersey. Good evening to the council and all the attended and the audience at large. I'm here tonight to, again publicly, invite parents of the Patterson Public School to our back-to-school kickoff night. I don't know, no, I want to congratulate the council president. You did repost, as I asked everyone to do last week, repost the flyer and actually tag your community. Councilwoman Mendez. And then also, I'd like to publicly thank councilwoman at large, Lelisa Memes. And she has graciously donated a DJ for December 15th, which we needed, a DJ. We still need one for, I'm sorry, for October the 15th. I said December. October the 15th. We still need a DJ for October the 1st, if someone can help us with that. All right, so Patterson Public Schools will have their annual back-to-school kickoff night on October the 1st at Eastside High School. We will address all the barriers that sometimes the parents can't make it because of whether it's translation, whether it's childcare, whether it's transportation. We have transportation going to the school from their local neighborhood schools. The only thing that you have to do, parents, is actually scan the bar on the flyer, go to the Patterson Public School district website, and then you can register, and we will have a bus pick you up at your local school. We will have food, fun, entertainment, giveaways. We have, we are partnering with the Patterson Community Policing, and they are giving us popcorn, ice cream, candy, all of that stuff for kids, and inflatables, activities. And of course, we will be doing professional development and parental involvement for our parents. Tonight is back-to-school night, so parents in the Patterson Public Schools, please make sure that you attend your virtual back-to-school night for those elementary schools. And then on the 29th, it's high schools. So, welcome back, parents, and we invite you to do our kickoff. And thank you again publicly to all of the council people who have supported the parents throughout the years.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Please repost those flyers.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker is Dr. Melissa Barra.
Thank you. Good evening, council, everyone present and everyone at home watching. I wanted to invite everyone to several events that are occurring simultaneously in our city. I understand that there are, there is a lot of need, and we need to all be collectively involved so that the community can really stay present and help out all of us when we're in need. When one of us hurts, all of us do. This Sunday, we have the Puerto Rico and Dominican Republic Donation Marathon at Eastside High School from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., 150 Park Avenue. If anyone would like to donate any non-perishable items or any first aid collectibles, we are collecting for the brethren in the Caribbean Islands that have been affected by Hurricane Fiona. Please contact either Councilman Luis Velez, Councilman Alex Mendez, Councilwoman Marissa Davila, or any other council for that matter, to get in contact with how you can best be committed and join our efforts to help out our sister countries. Also, there will be a cleanup on Thursday on 21st Ave., sponsored by Deputy Mayor Elsa Montilla and the City of Patterson, if you'd like to meet, from 10:00 a.m., all starting from East 23rd Street and 21st Ave., and the endpoint will be the Boys and Girls Club. Also, I want to reiterate and kind of reinstate what Commissioner Bridget Arick stated here today, and invite people to the PTO meeting on Saturday, to which I am proudly involved and have been for a while now. Getting the parents out there, if the parents are not involved in the children's education, we will all fail, and we will all perish as a whole. So it's time for the community to come out and really be, really be filled with what resources we have to provide for all parents in the system. Also, PFI has its annual scholarship dinner, in which we provide scholarships for underprivileged first-generation students in the cities of Patterson, Prospect Park, Hilton, and neighboring cities, as like. If you would like to come and donate and join our efforts to really help educate and promote education in our city, we look forward to having you there. I'd like to end by wishing everyone blessings, and I hope that we can all continue to prosper as we have. God bless Patterson, and thank you for having me.
Thank you, Dr. Barra. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Mr. Elvis Dorham.
How everybody doing?
We're doing great, thank you.
Mr. Elvis Dor, 4th Ward, Patterson, New Jersey. Before I go into my announcements, just want to say we had a wonderful weekend in the city of Patterson, New Jersey, for the first time since the Great Falls Festival. It was amazing. Kennedy High School, they had the Women's Convention, J's Day at J's Car Wash. It was so many things going on in the city of Patterson, New Jersey. But don't stop there, people, okay? Just don't let it be a one-time shot. It would be nice if y'all could make that an annual day at that Women's Convention that y'all had at Kennedy High School. So many youth came out, and they got taught. Okay, I got some announcements. We have a new restaurant about to open up inside Center City Mall. It's called 23 Favorines Plus. It's going to be upstairs on Level U. Center City Mall have a new restaurant coming soon, okay? Also, I want to encourage everybody, it's over 25,000 people watching us on cable, 16,000 people via RZA, and God knows how many people watching on YouTube. Be careful what you say. Amen? I want to encourage everybody to support Smoking Crabs and Seafood inside Center City Mall on 301 Main Street, downtown Patterson, New Jersey. Also, we have karaoke night at Smoking Crabs every Friday, 6:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Community, it's time for the Black community and the Spanish community to come together. It's time. When we come together, nobody can't stop us. We could get what we want. Got another announcement. My home church, we have an Iowa Women's Convention with Dean Fellowship Center, 292 North 8th Street, Prospect Park, New Jersey. My pastor is Pastor Brenda Davis Gilmore. We have our Women's Conference on October 23rd, that's a Friday, 7... No, October 21st, Friday, 7:00 p.m. October 22nd, that's a Saturday, 7:00 p.m. And Sunday, we're going to close out with a bang on October 23rd at 4:00 p.m. That's at 292 North 8th Street, Prospect Park, New Jersey. We have a lot of surprise guests that will be stopping by. Also, I'm going back to Inter Patterson, New Jersey. We got a revival coming to Patterson, y'all. Amen? I'm looking forward to Patterson, New Jersey, to come out. We all need revival, amen? I need a revival. The Patterson Advanced Research Center, Church of God in Christ, presents a crusade and revival on October 5, 7:00 p.m. October 6, 7:00 p.m. No, October, yeah, October 6, 7:00 p.m. And October 7, 4:00 p.m. This is going to be at Patterson Advanced Research Center on 98 Stray Street, Patterson, New Jersey. Okay, but the pastor is Pastor Edis, okay? That's Patterson Advanced Research Center, Church of God in Christ. Okay, they, this is the announcements. And Patterson people, it's time for us to come together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dorham. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Gilmore, David Gilmore.
Mr. Gilmore?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dave Gilmore, 14 Van Houten Street, Patterson. I just can't let it go, because this young man that preceded me said something I think that was very important. And we all have an occasion to say something important. He said the Black and Hispanic community comes together, pretty much paraphrasing, "We're unstoppable." And that may be true. But we got some damn poor leadership in this community. I'm not speaking to the Spanish, because I don't know the Spanish leadership. But I should damn sure talk about the Black. Or should I say the Negroes? Because, because I need to, I need to let you know. Somebody told me, in no uncertain terms, that they're traidor. Traidor. Some of y'all know what that mean. In other words, traitors. Letting us down. Working for their own self-ingrandizement. Selling us out, so they could be a deputy mayor. Or a chaplain. Or some of those other non-paying and/or paying positions where we are bait for whatever it is they want. I speak specifically to the organization better known as the Blacks for Better Patterson, of which I was a part of in terms of the bait and switch. It wound up being Negroes for Andre. So let's, let's talk about it and tell it like it is, because that's what happened. The same thing, we, many of us were there. So, but it doesn't go without saying, you know, because I don't care. They can't do nothing to me. Already fired me. But I'll be, I'll be back in a minute. So anyway, we're going to hold people's feet to the fire and accountable for the things they say and do. Too many things are happening, particularly with talking about the Black and Hispanic community, why we are not rallying and galvanized for Felix the Jesus. What happened to him? Now, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody. We just want to know what happened. So where are the people that are in leadership to stand in solidarity? Anybody seen them? Where are they? NAACP. Nothing about anything, nothing about anything concerning Patterson. That's what it stands for. It's a shame. So we're, we're, we have to be vocal. We have to come forward, and I want to acknowledge that people like Cory and others that come and speak for the community, God bless you. Thank you for your service, because the leadership is missing in action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Mr. Francisco Gonzalez.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Francisco.
Now here, next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Bilal Hakim. Mr. Bilal Hakim?
Mrs. Hakim?
Bilal.
Continue, Madam Clerk. Next speaker.
Kimmy Freeman. Mr. Freeman?
Kimmy Freeman, 3rd Ward, resident of Patterson.
Resident of Patterson for 61 years. I've come before this council many times, many issues. I'm glad the City of Phillipsburg finally implemented a childcare field. But I'm not going to waste your time on that today because you guys know we need that. And I think the reason why it's been held up, postponed, because the people have lost trust in the police. We really have. Two Fridays ago, 2 o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday, there was a shooting in the City of Patterson in the 3rd Ward. 20th Ave and East 18th Street, right across the street from me. A gentleman pulled out with a motorcycle. I'm not my dander, I didn't see the whole thing. Guy's in a car, this is not the first time they making little drug deals there because they could hit the highway and be gone. Guy in the motorcycle pulls up, argument ensues. Guy in the motorcycle shoots at the guy in the car. He misses the motorcycle, hits the house across the street from me. This is on a Friday, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. That's just one incident. We're talking about the City of Patterson. Like I said, I've been here 61 years. I lived in the 4th Ward my whole life. My grandparents lived in the 1st Ward. I thought I was safe when I moved to the 3rd Ward. Let me tell you something. Some people think I'm a smart guy, right? I already told about my academic problems, but that doesn't mean anything. I do know this statistic, according to the census, that 29% of people in Patterson are poor. If you use the 165 population, that means 47,000 people in the City of Patterson are poor. All right? All this violence going on, and I've seen violence, believe me, I've seen violence over. I have gun. The last seven of those boys got shot, the seven boys, I was right there. Clinton Street and back to school 28, almost rolled into it. I've seen enough violence. I've seen people die. My cousin got killed. And according to your own website, Patterson is one of the worst cities in the United States to live. And I'm not throwing Patterson under the bus. 50 years ago, when I was a 10-year-old kid, Patterson wasn't like this. It was not like this. Black people own almost all the bodegas that you see now. Every last one was black-owned. Most of the bars, black-owned. People, black people had jobs. There wasn't as much crime, even though heroin hit, hit Patterson in 1970. And I saw that, people shooting up in the basement, 10 years old, going up Grubbs Street. And I walk my behind the east side every day, well, not every day. But I tried to do the best I could. Not only to get out of Patterson, but to come back to Patterson and to help the people of Patterson. All right? Just give me another 20 seconds. I became a teacher because I wanted to make a change. The Project 2000 project, you guys need to look this Project 2000 up. This is the reason why I became a teacher. And I volunteered at the school I went to when Joe Clark was the principal. And you guys, you dropped the ball in Project 2000. And then because I stood up and said, "What you doing to the kids are criminals," you rose with me. No, better yet, I like movies, Gladiator. I did all this stuff for the City of Patterson, represented the City of Patterson, Woodverre, President Summit for America's Future. I represented the City of Patterson. And what you guys do? Gladiator. Took me out in the woods. But you can't kill me. What the administration is doing now and what the black leadership is doing, I was there. Well, yeah, that's what black leadership. I'm ashamed. I'm covering out in retirement now as being an activist, all right? And I told people at that meeting, all those bushy Negroes and everything else, I've never failed a mission. I see my kids in Project 2000 every day on those parks. Those kids are 39, 40 years old. And I kept some of those kids out of jail. That's what Project 2000 did. What Patterson do? You drop the ball. Better yet, you through the game. I, I don't want to leave Patterson, I have to stay here another five years. But I'm going to do my damnedest to make a difference. And guess what? I haven't been here because I had a broken hip. Now I have a broken knee because of accidents. And then my car that got jacked up from the manhole, I take it over to Pep Boys, they've analyzed it. Not to mention the $2,000 I've already spent from potholes. You guys got to do a better job. Or maybe I need to run for council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Yes, Mr. President. I'm going back to Bilal.
Yes, please.
Yes, Mr. Bilal Hakim.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk and President. Bilal Hakim, 282 Broadway. One day, everybody's going to die. Everyone is going to die one day. You know, Mr. Moody, Chief Tambou always mentions that, that often we have opinions about various things and they vary. But one thing that is a fact, everybody in this room, you're going to die one day. I don't know who's going first before me or if I'm going to go first. But I know going through this here condition, and I'm getting here, like you said, because I had treatment today and it requires that I rest and I was very tired. So, you know, I got here and I'm thanking you for giving me the opportunity to speak. The first thing I wanted to just say is that as a city employee, I work for the city. I know our city IDs, they expire after, you know, the election. And we supposed to come get new IDs to reflect that. To the President, to the BA, am I correct? Every, we should be issued new IDs after they expire. Is there a policy that says that you can't get a ID? Or a policy saying that if you're on leave, you can't get a ID? I'd just like to know that. And if so, I'd like to have a copy of that. Because I've been waiting all day. I was scheduled to get a new ID today. My phone was full of messages when I finally got here, which if I'd have known, I wouldn't have came because, you know, it's tiresome for me moving around like that. Found out that someone said that you can't get a new ID because you're on leave. So I said, "Who, who said that?" They went and got the person. That person came out and I asked that person, I said, "Where's, you have it in writing?" He said, "I'm waiting for my boss." Well, I haven't heard back from anyone. I just need an answer. I, I need a new ID. The second thing I want to just say is that I do appreciate it. We could sing together, but we can't talk at the same time, y'all, please. I want to extend appreciation for some of the efforts that are taking place in that part of Broadway. But when I talk about Broadway, I talk about all of it, from the beginning to the end. The pressure has to be on. Your presence means a lot. As I told you, we will demonstrate to you that how it is done. You know, we've been asked to assist them at the building where I live, where I'm not moving. And we have stepped in. And we have a security apparatus. And I have extended myself to the residents and let them know, I just need your full cooperation. That's all. Give me your cooperation, you know me, I've lived amongst you. This cannot go on like this here. And so I've got their agreement. We're waiting to have a full meeting with all the residents. But I did let them know that at any time that a police unit has to be called to that building, there will be a consequence. There will be an armed guard there, you understand, to make sure that nobody is there. But they're demonstrating, because, you know, I'm no stranger to any of them. One minute, sir. The other thing I wanted to mention, I ordered a computer as I was, as I was traveling. And when I ordered the computer, they sent the computer to Indianapolis where the computer was coming from instead of here. My address was here and because a red flag came. I want y'all to hear this here, everybody pay attention a minute. They said that they could not send, and they were going to send it to a post office box. They said that Patterson was a high risk for theft. I mean, at the post office, that I couldn't even get a computer. I've been waiting almost two months. I just got a confirmation that my computer should be here on the 29th of September, the day, the birthday of my dear mother who has passed. Rahmatullah Alehi, may the mercy of God beyond her. So that's what I wanted to say to each and every one of you. We have an awesome responsibility as stewards of this here city to not put our heads in the sand. I mentioned before about city, city employees being elevated. I say to you, council, every last one of you, no one exempt, that the mayor wants a lot of things. A lot of things he wants, he wants done. And he needs your cooperation with these various things. I'm saying to you, as I said before, by executive order, every employee in this here city could be brought all the way up the park, you know, with other surrounding areas, if you took a position, not, you know, you know, we're negotiating it. No, don't talk about no negotiation. You could have just said, "Listen, if you want to bring that to the table, mayor, do this right here by executive order." He could, he could do that. Last but not least, because there were several other things, and I appreciate you giving me this here opportunity to just convey this here message.
Please zip it up, sir.
We're starting next week, a congregational prayer in Barbers Park. All of our paperwork is in place. We're inviting the Muslim community to come out to Barbers Park. We have contacted various speakers, khatibes, you brothers Islamic know what khatib, the speaker, imams, to come and give a message to the, you know, to the believers in, in the community. I'm saying to you all, please, do your job. We're going to be watching you. Again, I want to salute the new elected Councilman-at-Large. I've called him on the issue of, of quality of life. And he has responded appropriately. My people have been monitoring that. The response has been well. And again, it takes our cooperation. If we go amongst the people, if we go amongst the people and communicate and they don't see you as a stranger, don't be afraid.
Please zip it up, sir.
They will, yeah, I'm coming, sir. But this is important. They will respond because I talked to those neighbors and that was just a, you know, just impromptu meeting. But I'm having a formal meeting with all of them. Because I told them, if they want smoke, we will bring fire to them. Because I'm very serious, I do, the law, the Lord-in-law, and I'm going now. The Lord-in-law has been appealed, repealed. However, obstructing people from the sidewalk, we don't need police riding by and telling them, and not saying that, move the crowds because they become magnets for people that are shooting. And I would not want to see a kid, a lot of kids in that building and elders who've been there for years to get shot down. Mr. President, take note of this, what I'm saying. And we can speak on it later because I know it's just three, three minutes here. But that is very important. These places where they're congregating in front of these buildings, we must break them up. They're obstructing.
Thank you.
The throughway.
Thank you.
And there's more.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Mr. Alvin Bush.
Alvin Bush, Patterson. Good evening, Council President.
Good evening.
Council members. I have a question on the table.
Bring up the podium.
Oops.
Bring it up.
Excuse, how can an individual?
Pull it up.
Bring it up, yeah.
How can an individual be qualified to serve his country but not qualified to serve his community? My godson served this country as a military police officer for three years. He went to qual, and I put him out to be Patterson police officer since he was 14 years old. Every, all he wanted to do was be a cop, especially in this city, born and raised here. He took the psych test and failed it. So he called me and I said, "How in the world can you fail at that?" Know what they told him? They asked him a question. They said, "Why do you want to become a police officer?" He said, "There is an evil out there and I want to confront it." You know what they told him? It was problematic. It was problematic. And because he was a teenager, they disqualified him because he didn't have a full-time job. You idiot, he's in high school. And not only that, they told him to appeal. I gave $1,000 to a psychiatrist outside of Patterson in West Orange who said he was highly qualified to be a police officer, highly qualified. He could put his life on his line for his country, but he's not qualified to put his life on his own community where he was born and raised. Somebody got to give me an answer. And not only that, I give kudos, respect, and love to Councilman Jackson, who heard it and called him at home and then went 7 o'clock at night to his home to hear what happened. Somebody got to give me an answer, how he's qualified to serve his country, born and raised in this city, but is not qualified to wear a gun and a badge. And I will not sit here and let nobody take his dreams and put it down a pipeline. From day one, he always said, "God, Dad, all I wanted to do was be a police officer." And he didn't say anywhere, he said here. And now he, and know what they want to do? Let me put the icing on the cake. You know what they told him? That not only was he not qualified, they trying to blackball him in the state of New Jersey from being a police officer. And I'm not going to let this go by. If I got to take it and pay, take money in my pocket to pay a lawyer, it's not going to happen to him. And this, this city need officers and you got a great one qualified there as a military police officer for three years. Councilman Jackson, love and respect that you took time out of your schedule to actually go to this young man's house to help him. And for that, there's no words to express to say thank you. My time is up, I thank you for yours.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Tiquan Jackson.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, Council, how are you? Good evening. So I applied for the law enforcement test three times. The first time, I scored a 78. They told me it wasn't high enough, so I had to take it again. Took it again, got a 98, but this time it was for corrections, not municipal police. So I had to wait another year. Wait again, got an 87. Finally got called by Patterson. Got called twice, actually. First time I got called, they told me that I didn't make the cut and then, so that was it. I didn't hear nothing else. Then the second, they called me a year later and they said, "Okay, you can move forward now." So I filled out the application twice, twice. I had to get my paperwork twice, submit the same paperwork twice. Then I went through the whole process and I failed the psych. So I appealed it. Like my godfather said, if it wasn't for him, I couldn't have appealed that. I couldn't have appealed that. And they knew what they were doing. $1,000 for a psychologist, who has that lying around? I don't, I'm 24 years old, I'm not a millionaire. Like, this is crazy. But, so I submitted that report of, I got a highly qualified psychologist that knew civil service. He showed me his record, he's, the civil service knew him. When I told them who he was, they was like, "Oh, yeah, we know this guy, don't even worry about it. We know this guy, we'll give him your reports, everything." So I submit my reports to him. He said, he looked at it, he was like, "This psychologist makes no sense what he's saying." He said, "Oh, you got this, don't even worry about it." So he evaluated me. He said, he put me through a rigorous test. At the time, I did not have, no idea what kind of tests these were. But he put me through rigorous tests and he said, "I wanted you," he told me at the end, "I put you through these tests because I didn't want you to, I didn't tell you about these tests because I didn't want you to act in a special way or something or show off. I wanted you to see how you were going to act in that situation at that moment." And that's what I did. I, I did exactly, he told me, he said, "You were patient. You had, you had the patience of a saint, actually," he said. He said, "You, you're confident, you know what to do, you, you think on your feet." He said, "You, you, no problem about you." He said, "I'll write the report, have it done, submit it to the civil service." He submitted to the civil service. The civil service didn't even care, didn't even care. When I went to my panel board, they said nothing about it. Didn't even care about my psychologist, nothing. So I, I waited, they made a decision, and they still say I'm unfit. I served in the military police corps for three years, still in inactive reserves, still in. I've carried in-force, I've carried any weapon you can name. I've shot a grenade launcher. Are you kidding me? They would give a grenade launcher to somebody who's insane, really? Okay. My senior year of high school, when I wasn't working, I used to go down to Patterson Police Headquarters and spend hours down there, hours, hanging out with the police officers, talking to them, learning the job. I watched cops since I was seven years old. I learned my random rights at seven years old. I was recited for officers. And they told me, "This guy is destined to be a cop." Captain Baykora, now chief, was chief, known him for years. First guy, took me under his wing, saw me, he was like, "Wow, this guy's a cop. This guy's going to be a cop." So in closing, I got to say, I don't know, but I need answers. Because this is ridiculous. It does not make sense to me. It doesn't. Because I know cops that don't belong in the force. And I'm not going to call them out because I respect them and it is what it is. But I know, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President. Next speaker, Ms. Crystal Garcia.
Ms. Garcia.
Good evening to all in attendance. Two hundred and thirty-eight days and counting. So tonight, we would like to do a follow-up with some of our council members. Councilwoman Devilla, two weeks ago, I madly requested that Corporation Council seek an update on the, on the status of the IA investigation into the two rookie police officers that took Felix into custody illegally. I would like to note that your request was one of many requests for an update status on the IA investigation over the past few months. Have you been provided any information from Corporation Council since your last request? Additionally, we would like to thank the Patterson Police Department for joining forces with the Heldon Police Department and offering an additional $10,000 reward for any information leading to the successful location and physical recovery of missing Heldon resident, Mr. Felix Joel de Jesus. That brings the total to $15,000 from both police departments and a grand total of $35,000 when added to the $20,000 offered by the de Jesus family. Thank you again for your support in this very delicate matter, although it took almost eight months. Councilman Mendez, a while back, you mentioned that you were going to draft a letter as a gesture of support for our case in hopes that it would, could be signed by the Patterson City Council and sent to the FBI requesting their assistance in our case. The letter will have spelled out all conflicts of interest that are currently ongoing in this IA investigation at the Patterson Police Department. What is the status of this letter? In closing, the de Jesus family reminds the public that we are also offering a reward of $20,000 for the safe return of Felix de Jesus to the family or any information leading to the arrest and conviction of any and all persons involved with Felix's mysterious disappearance or possible demise. This is in addition to the $15,000 reward that the both Patterson and Heldon Police Department is offering. We are a resolute in keeping the pressure on the administration and Patterson Police Department to conduct a fair and impartial IA investigation into the Felix disappearance. We are not going nowhere. If Mr. Villa and Mr. Mendez or Corporation Council would like to provide us with an update on any findings, we will be in the back of the room. Also, I see here on the resolution or the agenda that you want to give officers 16 new vehicles and install new equipment. I think we have to come up with a better plan. And these officers need something to where their body cams turn on instantly and they cannot turn it off. That is our biggest issue. These officers need some type of dash cam in their vehicles. Forget new vehicles, new, new, I'm sure they're good with the vehicles they have. The new vehicles to where when this vehicle turns on, that dash cam starts rolling. It doesn't turn off if that vehicle doesn't turn off. We need to make sure that these officers are being tracked at all times during all interactions with any civilian. They are our biggest gang in this city. The corruption in there is the worst corruption there is in this city. We have to get 90% of them out. I'm not, we're not anti-police. We do have many pe, uh, police officer friends and family. But at the same time, the corruption, the levels of corruption starts there. Let's clean that up first.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Corey Teague.
Corey Teague, 65 Prince Street. Also need to make mention that my ballot position for the November 8 election is 5F. Want to give a quick shout-out to two of my top strategists, Merrily Jackson and Vera Ames, who constantly give me instruction on how to actually move forward. But tonight, I'm here once again for the de Jesus family. We are coming up on almost eight months. Um, to my knowledge, from speaking with the family, they have not received a straight answer from the city of Patterson, which includes, um, internal affairs, prosecutor's office, you name it. You name any law enforcement agency locally, they have not received a straight answer as to what happened to Felix. And at the end of the day, that is all they really want. This isn't a witch hunt, this isn't a personal vendetta. This family wants what any family who went through a situation like this deserves, and that is answers, and that is justice to know what happened to their loved one, to Felix. What we know right now is that on the night of February 2nd, 2022, there was an incident there close to Front Street by West Side Park. We know there was an interaction between him and Patterson Police Department, and then he vanished. That's what we know. And, and to this very day, there has not been a straight answer given to this family. We have video footage, as Crystal alluded to, there must be, there must be something put in place to where once those cameras are turned on, they cannot be turned off manually at all. There has to be some, some effort put towards that. And we still are waiting for answers. I'm waiting here with the family, and I'm going to continue to be here with them. You know, to those who think that we shouldn't come up here, you're absolutely wrong. If this happened to a member of your family, you would want the community to rally behind you as well. And I, I get it, there's some people who are, who are being affected and being impacted because we continue to come here. That's not my concern. My concern is making sure that this family gets answers and gets justice. Uh, again, I'll allude to something I said, I think, last week or two weeks ago, that the judge has allowed in, in the, um, Jameel Lowry case, the judge has finally allowed that, that evidence to be entered into the record. For those who said I was crazy for saying that the police beat up Jameel, it looks like it's going to turn in a different direction now. You know, I speak a lot and I represent these families, but if you go back and you look at the things that I fought for, every single thing that I've stood up and fought for has come back to be correct. So you can call me whatever you want to call me, but when everything comes, when everything settles and the dust clears, you will see that Corey Teague stood for what was right, and you will see that I was standing up for what was right. I speak to these families. I attend their events and parties because I'm a part of these families. I don't just show up here and speak for them. I'm with these families, and I'm going to continue to remain an activist and an advocate in this community. That's the difference between me and a lot of other folks. When I stand here and fight for you, I do it for free. I don't collect a salary, I don't collect any, any money for this. This is what I do because this is what I believe. And my daughter, Kanaya, who's watching, uh, probably on YouTube, I'm confident that when I'm gone, that Kanaya is going to stand up and she's going to continue to do the work that I do right now. And I, I'm confident that I could pass the torch to her. But it's almost eight months. I know the number eight is supposed to be the number of new beginnings, but in this case, that number eight doesn't represent anything new. It represents something that's been going on way too long, and we want justice for Felix de Jesus.
Thank you, Mr. Teague. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Ms. Winnie Harrison. Ms. Harrison.
Good evening, everyone, um, to the de Jesus family. I'm still praying with y'all. I just speak to one of the sisters, um, the sister-in-law, and I gave her information. And I also told them, they done been to the council long enough, so now it's time for them to go to the freeholders or the commissioners. Sometime, you got to take another step. I'm up here, my name is Winnie Harrison, I'm a fourth, fourth-generation resident of the city of Patterson. I'm standing here in regards to say thank you, um, to the BA and all those that agree for Ceasefire to receive office space. Um, I know it's not mentioned for the public portion, but Ceasefire. You talking to me?
No, 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 to the family.
Oh, okay. Um, excuse me, I thought she was talking to me. Uh, for all those that, that said yes for, for 16 years, Ceasefire, been trying to get office space um, because we came out of, um, the churches. So I just want to say thank you for that. And also on October the 20th, we will be having our annual award ceremony. I did text all the members of the council, um, and the Madam Clerk do have a copy of the flyer that was sent to your box. Would love to see all y'all there. If y'all not able to attend, you could sponsor a ticket or you can make a donation. Ceasefire, we do, we do this without pay. We do this because we love our community and we would love to stop the shooting for the city of Patterson. But we also need financial support and physical and emotional support as well because it's only us that's doing it. So for all the council people and all those that's sitting in attendance, um, everyone is welcome. It would be at the PBA building on 21st Ave on the Thursday. So you can't say, well, my Friday and Saturday is busy. We, we're going to be there on a Thursday night and it's going to be catered by the Brownstone. We appreciate your services, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker is Ms. Wahida Mohammed.
Ms. Mohammed.
With God's name, good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, let me just say, here we go again. I don't know how many of you watched the Patterson Chronicle with our dear brother, uh, Councilman Jackson. But I'm going to tell you, when I listen to the information that was given and when you hear the young man talk about what his life dream was, I don't know how any of us can sit there and not know that something is wrong. And not just knowing something is wrong, to be committed to correct the wrong. And through the cheer to the BA, some of the things that was chronicled in that presentation is at your door. And for whatever reason that you have chosen not to do the right thing bothers me to my soul. Because I don't understand how it is that you feel that you have the right to deny someone their dream to do what's right for them. And I understand because you have your big job and you have your $50,000 and nobody can tell you anything and you got the mayor on your side, so you don't care about. But I'm just here to tell you, that's now who's going to decide for you what your punishment is going to be. Because see, God is able to show you when none of us can. And I'm just saying to you right now, you better get it together because you don't know what is going to happen. And to you, Mike Powell, I'm going to tell you. You said to me one time, Wahida, the things that are being said are not the truth. But then prove it, prove it to me. That's all you got to do, is show me that Mike is lying, and I'll be the first one to tell him that he told me a lie. But you got to prove that. And I'm not playing with any of you. The fire chief, who's denying those hard-working people from Patterson to be EMTs when they've done that all this time, and now to do it the way that you're doing it. I don't know how any of you go home and sleep at night knowing what's happening in this city. And I know, Council President, you could care less about what I'm saying, but I'm going to tell you. When you were here before and the things that the mayor was doing and you had your moments of realization, you didn't think that it was okay to do anything. But all of a sudden, it's okay, but you too will answer. And I remember when we were talking about the cameras for the police, how my first question was, what would the penalty be if those cameras are turned off? And I don't know if any of you remember, but roll the tape because it's there. So I just want to say to the family, I do thank God for the opportunity to stand with you, but I want you to know that God is still in charge. And as the song say, I don't know when and I don't know how, but God is going to fix it. Thank you, God bless.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, um, Imad Adama, 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 Imad. He stepped away.
I, I think they left.
Okay. The next person, last speaker, but not least, Mr. Farid Pathan, Farid Pathan.
Thank you. Council President, uh, Councilor-at-Large, Councilman, Councilwoman, uh, Sooda Clark, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, personally, I know most of you, uh, first of all, I congratulate Council President and new Councilor-at-Large, congratulate you as a new member, and, uh, most of you, uh, I know personally, and, um, you're very good. This is the example of the city of Patterson, that Arabs, African-Americans, Bangladesh and Bengali community and our Hispanic community. This is the example of what the multi-diversified city, that we can make our city much better if we can all support and do some extra work for our city. And that all depends on you guys. You are the leader. You are the leader of our community. We sent you to sit in there. Your leadership and your job is going to be the example for us, how we can lead. And we can make our city much better. This is only the biggest city of the world, New York, it's like 15 miles away. We can bring the business in our city. We can do a lot more if you guys do a little extra work. Please, let's make our city. I've been, I raised this city, I graduated from Kennedy in 1983, long time ago. It wasn't like this. Please. I congratulate Mr. Shain Klik that the crime rate in the second world is going down. Good job, thank you. I congratulate Mr. Breed to be the, um, Councilor-at-Large elected. And Ms. Ames is very, very, uh, 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 our community is very, very connected. And Ms. Cotton, we know you guys are experienced. Mrs. Jackson, I know him personally, Ms. Ms. Devilla and her husband, Henry, a good friend of mine. We can make our city much better. I came here for two issues in here today. First issue, that one of the guy that's here, gentleman, uh, Charagali, Charagali, please stand up. His daughter can't go on a bathroom, can't go on a bathroom because somebody is trespassing and looking at the window. Middle of the night, two, three times, two, three times, we got a police call and couldn't find out. I got the picture, I will provide it today. I got the picture, I got the video. The second one, that, that, the whole country, the whole world, we've been in a pandemic for sometime like two, three years. Uh, we get a lot, lot of help from a federal government, from a state government. Can I ask you what the city, this local city, for the property owner, you gave it to us? Did you do anything? At least waive the penalty of the late fee for the tax. You can do that one, at least. Thank you for your service, salute you.
Mr. President, there are no more.
Thank you. And I have a motion.
Move to close.
Move to close by Councilman Velez, second by Councilman Abdulaziz. Roll call to, uh, close the public portion, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call to close the public portion of the regular meeting of September 27, 2022, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Jackson.
Well, the road stops there. Ms. Mohammed, trust and believe, I don't find, I don't have any reason to lie. If someone calling me a liar, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, hoping for them to show the proof of the untruths that I've stated, so we can bear witness to it. You know, part of the problem is there's a lot of people who, uh, get certain positions and they believe they're more than what they are. You know, when you come to this podium, it is your prerogative to address the council and whomever you like to address, however you like to address them. If you want to turn around, speak to the audience, if you want to do jumping jacks while you're there, you have the ability to do so. And it's much like, you know, I own a firearm. It's a legally purchased firearm, it's in my name, but I lost my purchases, uh, card. I filed out an application to get a new one, and now it's electronic, you have to do it online. And I was then told by a representative of Patterson Police Department that I am ineligible for a new firearm permit and I can't apply for my concealed permit because I have been indicted of a crime. I thought this was America. I thought you are innocent until proven guilty. So I, what I did is what I normally do. I asked. I asked for the law, show me the law. I've still, I have yet to find it. When I ask for the process and the procedure for individuals in this city being hired as EMTs, when all of the Patterson residents are required to be firefighters first, when they are required to go through a firefighter's academy, I've still have yet to receive that. I think you have to be a resident of Wayne in order to qualify for that specific entitlement. So when I have a young brother like Mr. Jackson, who comes before the podium and notice how it's gone on deaf ears, this council is the balancing act. We hold the administration accountable for their wrongdoings. And you're absolutely correct, Ms. Muhammad. The signing authority in this city is the B.A. So when the recommendation, a false recommendation is given, just like when the recommendation, when the order was given from civil service to state that the previous zoning officer was unqualified for the position, he still remained employed, gainfully employed, might I add, making a six-figure salary for three years. When that letter was written the first year, he worked here. So I'm urging everyone to wake up. And my brother, I appreciate you. And if it takes me come out 3:00 A.M., I do it because that's what I do. I don't do it because his name is Jackson, I don't do it because he's black. I don't do, I do it because he's from Patterson, he's a Patterson person who has been mistreated. And we are here to represent our people. I'mma, I'mma challenge you, Ms. Muhammad. Mind you, this council must function as a body. Can you please help me recall the last time this council, this body has acted on behalf of the public? When has this body taken action on behalf of a young man like that who's come to the podium and has clearly been mistreated? Mr. Kahim Hunt, I'm still waiting, Corporation Counsel, I was promising to be back to work soon. I'm still waiting. These are troublesome times. We've had, we, this council has approved, adopted, and the administration has administered raises that surpass the average salaries of the city, of the average worker in this community. But we have still, we have yet to be able to bring Mr. Hunt back to work. A young man who, by the way, who I was told, another untruth, that he was ineligible to hold his job any longer, that he can no longer be an EMT because he left the scene when someone lost their life. So after I do my research, I find out that's another untruth. I don't do that, Ms. Muhammad, I don't lie. Correct. And there's a certain protocol. All firefighters, there, there's a certain protocol that they have. If the scene is unsafe, they're unable to enter a scene that is unsafe. The safety of a scene must be first. And even a young brother who was an MP, a military police officer, when asked, if open gunfire comes about, what is the first thing you're gonna do? I'm gonna take cover. You're not armed. It's only an armed police officer that is required to put his life on the line and go into the line of fire. And even then, they're gonna take cover, they're not just gonna put their lives on the line. But here we have our community, members of our community, being neglected, being stepped over, being lied to, being misrepresented. I'm asking this council once again, when are we going to stand in solidarity on behalf? We have a great opportunity right here. This young man has come here and shown. Because we have consistently been told, we've been lied to again. Why doesn't the P.D. make up a certain fraction of what the community is reflective of? Nobody in Patterson wants to take the job. People don't wanna be cops. This young man is begging to be an officer and being scarfed off the table by a person that they hire to maliciously run a rules, to say, well, if we can't stop him from passing the test, if we can't stop him from meeting all the requirements, we could hire a doctor to say he's unqualified and unfit for duty. Because they depend on Patterson people not having the resources to contest it. But I thank God for people like Brother Bush, you know, who's not afraid to put his money where his mouth is and put his heart where it belongs and that's, in impacting the lives of young people. You wanna stop violence in this community, that's how you do it. You wanna change the trajectory of this community, that's the example of how you do it. They go into these high schools, and I'm closing, Council President, I don't wanna go too long. They go into these high schools and promote. They use our people, all those same black and Spanish and the one Chinese officer that we do have, they put him on flyers during campaign season. It was on the billboards, Rua 80, all these minority people who are Patterson residents, it was on the billboard, "Come be cops." You got a great example right there. And I could give you at least another dozen of them. I'm gonna have another one that's coming soon, he couldn't make it tonight. Same one, he was, he was done the same way with the fire department. Lives on, lives right on Mill Street. But his wife reached out to me because she saw one of my previous videos a long time ago and said, "You know what, I gotta get to you because my husband was treated the same way." How many of us have to be treated this way, Ms. Muhammad? Before we do what we claim we're gonna do. I'm representing you, I'm here for you, I'm doing this. Yet every time something happens, crickets. But you best believe, Mike Jackson is not afraid. I will stand on my conviction to support and stand for my people, to stand for people who have been being mistreated. I'm gonna speak the truth when the rest of them are gonna say, "Oh, that's not true." Well, tell me the truth then. Counter what I'm saying with facts. How can you not say there's not a racial disparagey around here? I forgot his name last night, but George Meadows. Now, when the lawsuit is gonna cost taxpayers money. Mr. Dave Gilmore, hopefully he takes me out to dinner when he wins the handsome lawsuit against the city. Ms. Deborah Hannibal, highly qualified, highly qualified, master's degree, 30, 40 years' experience, passed over for a young lady with no, no experience, who was a clerk in her previous position. How are we gonna say that this is not, it's not a racially disparaging situation here? It is absolutely. And if anybody is saying that it's not, it's them who is lying. Because they're not blinded, they're not. Anyway, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the work that you do all the time.
Thank you, Councilman.
It's rather disappointing, it's rather disappointing as I sit here and I have to have people sucking wind, getting tempered. Like, that flusters me. I stand on too strong. Any day, and I challenge them, say where I'm wrong at. "Oh, that's a lie." Those that have contested things in the past are now bending over for it now. But they're saying, I've been, I've held my position consistently. And every single, well, I have to use one of Cortez's lines for the night because every single issue that I've taken a stance on, I've been totally right on. So tell me where I'm wrong now. Again, we have proof. I apologize, Madam Clerk, I'm hearing some of the back wind and it just compels me to, to give, to go further. Because people with their temperament, need to temper their attitudes. This is ridiculous. We, we, we have let this community down. This council has let this community down, is the absolute worst council that I have ever seen. At least in the past, there's been some level of balance, some level of accountability. Nothing, nothing from this council. Quiet, crickets. Holding the scissors at ribbon cuttings while people's lives are being run over. And other people are running to the bank while developers walk away with $15 million in developer fees. And we still can't have people struggling to pay $2,200 in rent every month. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mendez.
Let me just address a few of the speaker on the public portion. But before I start addressing the first speakers, I think that, and I'm gonna say this, every time I come to this council and I sit in this chair, I make sure that I make the best decision on behalf of the community. Not on behalf of any, any, any personal interest or any group. God already blessed me more than I deserve, just for a point of clarity. I'm extremely independent. So, and I'm just gonna leave it like that, all right? We could talk about record anytime we want. To the Jesus family, I'm working on those letter and they almost done. And I would like to meet with the family to go over and review it. There's $55,000 out there for any person that come out and give information about Feli de Jesus. The community, and I'm gonna keep saying this, this community have to stay behind this family. And Mr. T, Commissioner T mentioned, I just wanna tell Commissioner Corey T that this is the people's house. And this is the place and the platform that the family of Feli de Jesus have to use to speak up in every meeting, in every meeting. And I pray God every single day for us to, for this to come to the end, to the end. Because over, around a month, and we have no information and we already hear what the local authority need to say, that it's an ongoing investigation. And my level of frustration is just, is so high that I'm just gonna leave it like that. I'm praying for this problem to be resolved, this situation, as soon as possible. That rally have to take place, family. I'll be on the front line with all of you. The whole community need to, need to get involved in this. Over a month, and we don't know where this gentleman is right now. We need to take action with that rally. To Mr. Jackson, the young man that came into the mic. Listen, I wanna congratulate you for your passion, your dedication. You wanna be a cop, you deserve to be a police officer. I'm gonna be behind you 1,000%. And if there, if there's any other person that is going through the same situation that you're going through, my cell phone number is 973-930-1436. We have the director of the police department right here in the room, former sheriff's officer. He knows this entity that's been his life. You should sit down with him. You should sit down, you got the people, you got the decision-making in this room. So you are in the right place for us to put everything on the table and be able to help you achieve your goal and become a police officer. We have to encourage our men and women, our young men and women, to join the police department, the fire department, the DPW, Economic Development Committee, the Department, Economic Development. So we have to. That's the only way that we're gonna move our city forward. By supporting a local resident to get those position of power, to serve the community and to serve the people, it's not rocket science. When you give the power to a local resident, you see the change in the city. You see, they live here, you live here day and night. You know our issues, you know what we facing to. And Bridge, I know she left, I'm definitely gonna continue encouraging our parent to get involved with the school system. One of the biggest challenges that we have in the community is our youth. But as a parent, we have a responsibility to be the best advocate for our children. And I'm gonna continue promoting that event. I know Dr. Baral came into the mic to announce that on Sunday we're gonna be at Eastside High School to support brothers and sisters from Dominican Republic and Puerto Rico due to the hurricane Fiona collecting all different items. We've been promoting that event and I'm looking forward to see our, our family and friends over there on that, on that event. With that being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mendez.
So, Councilman Mendez, you kinda stole the thunder. But let me start by saying this to the De Jesus family, I say the same thing every week. Thank you for your due diligence and persistence. And every time you come, which is every week, I write down what you say. It's been 238 days, too long, so I'll say that. I also want to congratulate you on your soon coming little baby boy. But I am definitely in prayer and in support of this family. There were many speakers that came out tonight to talk about the back to school for our parent teacher organization on October 1st and the 5th. I will continue to push that on my social media page and in my personal email blast. Also, for the speakers that came on tonight regarding situations or concerns in their community, please reach out. I just wanna say this, because sometimes things are said or insinuated whereas we don't care as council members or no one is really advocating or it's kinda micro, it's a small number, that is not true. It's hard to advocate for something we have, we have no idea about. So if you don't tell us or we're not aware of it, it's hard for council members to take a stand for something if you don't reach out to us, right? Our numbers are public. If you Google us, our information is out there. Whereas City Hall, you can come here to our clerk, give the information out. So I don't want it to be stated that we're here and we don't care because that is absolutely not true. So I'm gonna speak for myself, it's not true. If someone comes to me with information, I'm going to respond. I'm going to show up, I'm gonna make sure I'll do what I can do within my power and then I'm gonna direct you to whoever it needs to be, whether it's the administration, department heads or whatever. But I just wanna bring some clarity to that because it's not true that we don't care or we're just sitting here twiddling our thumbs and doing absolutely nothing. That is absolutely not true. If someone reaches out to us, we're going to respond. Sometimes people may not like the response, but that's beyond our control. But if you don't reach out to us, we cannot respond at all. So if you need my help or, you know, with so many situations, sometimes we're sitting in this dais and we hear it for the first time sitting here. So we're writing down and, and sometimes I'm on my phone Googling to see if I can find the data or the backdrop because I have never heard some of this stuff in my life. And we're sitting here and we're blinded by information that's presented because people have not talked to everybody. So I'm gonna say this, there are nine council members. There are six that represent a ward and there are three council at large. The three council at large, myself, Councilman Dabla, Councilman Udine, we represent the whole city. If there is an issue, reach out to us so that we can hear it as well. Because it's so unfair for it to be stated, oh, no one's talking about it, they're not saying nothing about it. And we have no clue, it's unfair to us to hear it stated and for people to say that. So I'm just saying, if you need my help, reach out to me, call me. My cell is 973-902-1957. That's my personal cell phone number. I made it my business through my secretary when we did our cards to put my personal cell on my card, not just the city cell. Because I wanted people to make sure they can contact me and get in touch. So if you have issues, please call, I'm gonna show up, I'm gonna respond. But if I don't know, I can't respond. If you don't reach out to me, I can't call you back. So make sure you do that because I'm sure every council member has the same, they feel the same. If you reach out, I'm sure they, well, I will respond. I'm, I believe they will, but I'm gonna say for myself, I will respond to your request. Give us the opportunity so that it's not stated that no one is fighting and no one is advocating. That is not true. We can't advocate for something that you have not told us about or we have not heard or we're here for the first time sitting here on the dais. So please, I'm asking, please do that. Call me personally, I'll meet you at your house, I'll meet you on Dunkin' Donuts, wherever you need to meet so we can have a conversation. But give us the opportunity to at least hear what's going on. Then we can get some information so we can get to the bottom and present some facts as to what's stated to us or point you in the right direction. Madam Clerk, I love you blue tonight. Thank you. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Udine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Patterson, good evening, everyone those who are here. And thank you, those who shared your concern in public portion. Let me start with Commissioner Harek and Dr. Baral, who are the advocates for our children in our city, trying to engage our parents and students in our kids' education. I appreciate your effort and I believe that everyone from our platform needs to support them to make sure that our parents are engaged in our, in our kids' education. And as an educator, this is the challenging part we face in our city. Because our parents do not know what's going on with our kids. When parents do not contact with our, with teachers, with school, then what happens is teachers do not know what's going on with that particular child at home. So I want everyone to please send a message out that everyone participates. So I want everyone to please send a message out that everyone participating back to school, a parent kickoff. Second thing, I, I think I need to address the young man, Jackson and his father Alvin Voish, who came here. And one thing I can, I can feel and I can say from their words, that the young man is very focused, aim oriented. He want, what, he's, he's fighting for the things that he want to accomplish. I don't think we, we are missing that in our, in our young generation these days. When a young person wanted to be in police department, we are somewhere discouraging him. We know the exact scenario that what made him not qualified to be in our PD. But I would love to hear from the correct department that why they think he's not qualified to be one of our police officer. One thing I can do tomorrow, which is right after the meeting, that I'll send an email that can our director or current acting chief go over his application, review that what made him not to qualify to serve in our police department. And if he qualifies for that, why not? He's getting hired. Is there any systemic racism existing in our department? We have to take a look at this. Cuz he came here, he spoke. Now, how many of young person like him are not coming to the council meeting? They give up? Cuz this is now really high paid job, just one thing you should know. Police department educators, they're, they're, because they're, they're passionate about their position. This is not well-paid position. It's not really the payment can motivate them. It's something they wanted to serve. And I appreciate our police officers, cuz when you guys started and the requirements that you went over, and you were, you were starting your salary like thirty-five thousand, forty thousand, which is if you work in a Dunkin' Donuts, you can make that money. So it's someone who want to be in public service, they don't want this job, they're passionate about this job. So I want to make sure that the correct person answer the question that why they think that he's not qualified for their position. And he's maybe just one we know, there's so many that we do not know. So you have to make sure that this is not taking place anymore in our city. Second thing, Feliz, uh, Jesus family, thank you so very much. I don't know what to say, but I appreciate your consistency that every meeting you are coming here. You're talking about, you know, the same issues. But when you were standing against something is not right, it giving the empowering the other people that if something goes wrong, I should come, I should stand. I appreciate that what you are doing. I pray for your family, and I hope these things get solved soon as possible. Brother Hakim, thank you so very much for your appreciative speech. You texted me around midnight Saturday night. I tried to help as much possible as of your council member. And I appreciate our police department, in less than ten minutes, I think things was resolved. I was out of state at that point, actually. I was, I was driving back to New Jersey, but I, I made sure that things get solved. I came back to Broadway, and when I found out that everything is, you know, solved by then, that was about two o'clock in the morning. Thank you. Thank you for reaching out to me. I don't know what else I should cover here. One of the person, Fareed Patan, I'm not sure he's here or not. One thing he appreciated, I thank him for the words of encouragement. But one thing I should say, that a young girl who's not safe at home, they reported to the police and nothing happened yet. Again, I don't know what I could do, but what I think is, I need to reach out to the family as of your council member. And I'll connect to whoever he needs to speak to. That's, that's all, that, this is what I'm gonna do tomorrow morning, Insha Allah. That's all from me, Madam Clerk. Thank you for your service, and my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
I'm the last one to speak. Oh, that's right, Moritz is here, Councilwoman. Miss Portugal, I think she was, Miss Portugal that came in. Miss Portugal, I, I would like you to, if she's here? No, she left. Please text me back. I lost all my contacts in my phone, my screen broke, so I cannot recover all of them. But I have the procedure, at least five of them, that speak about the runoff election. And also, I recommend it also that we have a conversation committee for legal and finance regarding this. Because it's, it will be a healthy conversation, including with our corporate to council. Regarding at least a little conversation where they could take us with this. Request that she's looking for petition, et cetera, about the runoff election. There's a process in everything, so, you know, I always say that it always is a process in everything. To Mr. Churchman, Mr. Durham, I just wanna advise you that the conference, the women's conference since two thousand nineteen have been going on unstoppable. They always do this every year. Not only the women conference, they also do the youth conference, and also the men's conference. And hopefully, in the future, we spoke about the kids' conference. So, there's one, right? Correct. So, that's always every year. The only thing is that it's always advertised, the only thing that we have to do is visit. A lot of things that, when it's a women conference, you want the women to do the conference. I don't wanna be there, but you have to go as an elective official to motivate them to be there as an elective official. Wahida Mohammed, I, I, I always have a lot of respect when you come to the podium, and, and anyone that comes to the podium. I, I always had that respect. But I always say, facts, 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 and facts. I cannot just receive somebody in my office and just listen to one side of the story and not do a investigation, in other words, or a conversation, or use a discovery to find out if the person that bringing that issue to my office is talking the facts. Okay? So, you're not gonna see me as a councilman and elected by the people to sit here to do or divide the community with more toxic statements that really are gonna divide us more than really bringing solution to the people out here. You know, we are nine council members in this chambers. We all was elected by the people to serve them. I don't think that out of nine people, eight people are wrong, and only one is right of every decision that we do here. We do a collective decision when we are in this side, and we do it for the people, or the residents of Patterson. Let me say this little story for you to know. My son, Louis Vales Tower, because his last name had to change it, because he's a police officer, right? To protect himself in social media. He went to East High High School. At the age of sixteen, he told me that I wanna be a police officer. I told my son, high school is not enough. You wanna be a police officer? That's me as a parent, me as a father, right? High school is not enough. So I told my son, I wanna see you going to college. So he went down to UPR, Puerto Rico, because college here was too expensive. Remember, I don't have medical insurance. How I gonna pay a school for my kids here? So he went to UPR, right? University of Puerto Rico. And he took forensic criminal justice. After he took commercial, uh, forensic criminal justice, then he enrolled in police, in the police department in Puerto Rico. But he didn't study there. He went to FBI Academy from Puerto Rico. Now he is a police officer in Orlando, Florida. So when, why I say this? Because then he could make a better judgment in his decisions and be more prepared when he's in front of difficult situations, right? He's more prepared for the job. I always encourage everyone out there that high school is not enough. Education is a must, it's a plus. And I always say, if you could get more prepared to do what you wanna do in life, that is fact. I had the opportunity to meet this young man in my office. That's why I always say, facts, facts, and facts. I orientate him the right way. And I always says, looks for the facts, facts, and facts. Because if you're gonna listen to one side of the story, we could make some toxic comments that will divide more this community. And our fellow officer in the city of Patterson do not need the morale put it the way that people want, just wanna put the police department. I'm not saying that everything or every cause is justified. I just saying is, facts, facts, and facts. I wish this young man that he could fulfill his career, but always, if I gotta take everything that comes to my office, only one side only, and then I gotta look for the other side, then we're gonna have a problem, because then we are lobbying for the wrong thing sometimes. Council President? And just for the viewers, and I know Councilman Colley, Councilman Udine say, I want to see a report. I want to see what happens. Listen, there's confidential reports that not even the state will share with us. It's not even operable. So, um, facts, facts, and facts. To the Jesus families, we keep on praying, and hopefully, somebody come forward with more information and making sure that he come back home safe. Madam Clerk, laughing at least, with Dr. Barat, don't, don't go and look at me, Council President, like that. Councilman Jackson had almost half hours, only attacking everybody here. At least I'm talking about good information. Councilman Marat?
Dr. Barat.
Dr. Barat mentioned about the Puerto Rico and Dominican relief that we have on October second from East, in East High High School. Please come out and donate goods for those brothers and sister in the Caribbean. Also, keep in prayer, the
Florida.
State of Florida. My, my daughter and my son calling from there, so they're a little bit nervous about it. So, my prayers goes to them and to all those that live in Patterson. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Council President, thank you.
Okay. Mr. President, before I, I call Councilwoman Dabla's name, remember we have an eight thirty executive?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Dabla, it's your turn. I just wanted to remind you.
Thank you very much. As you all that are here, I'm not gonna go through every speaker. There was, I believe, fifteen speakers, okay? I think a lot of our council members have addressed, but I am gonna say this one to Ms. Tiffany Portugal, that I know that she continues to come here. Keep fighting the fight, keep gathering the individuals. I truly do believe on runoffs. With that said, I know that Councilman Bellis stated that, you know, there, there is a process that we have to go through. And if it's something that you wanna put as a referendum, you have the right to do so. To, I'm sorry, I said Tiffany, I meant to say Tatiana Portugal. To the De Jesus family. I am happy that finally, okay, after numerous attempts, we finally were able to, and I say we, because as part of the city, that the administration was able to move forward with the wanted fee to the helden police department to add those ten thousand dollars to the five thousand of helden. I know that you addressed me and asking me, you know, where are we, what information, and you are correct. Every week, I get the same answer. Councilwoman Bellis stated something where it's something that's confidential, not even we get any information. I, I commend you for coming every week out here, and every day you're out there advocating on behalf of your family member. I actually believe that you need to move it up, and you need to address the other boards, county level, state level, to at least have them, because it's obvious to us that we here as a council, and I think Councilwoman Mendz said it best. You know, there are certain things that we don't know, and I actually also wanna address what you indicated. There are a lot of people that think that we know stuff. So they'll address one council member, and that council member may or may not share. This is not pointing at anyone. So, I as well, I'm that person. I am a phone call away. My secretary sends me all messages that come through the office. I have email, I have messenger, however, you know how to locate me, alright? Um, so, you know, with that said, we'll continue to pray for the family. I also wanna say, congratulations to Crystal. I know your daddy's happy, alright? So congratulations to you, you know, we keep praying for you, for your mom, alright? And Corporation Council, I came up to you now and I asked you, where are we? And again, the same thing, I received the same information, and in the Public Safety Committee meeting as well, is that it's confidential information. Still finalized report is not done yet, okay? And to, you know, to Patterson, to Lieutenant Easton, you know, to the entire panel, the panelists that were there, the artists, everyone that participated this weekend in the women's conference. It was beautiful, amazing, and it's so nice to see so many people come together to our deputy chief fail. And thank you for overseeing community policing and being part. Year after year, I see you there, so I truly, truly appreciate you. And I do appreciate the men and women in, in blue uniform. It's unfortunate that we have had instances that gives the department such a negative, um, negative attention. But we do understand that, you know, there are men, good men and women in the department. Madam Clerk, to Mr. Bilal Hakim, did he leave already? Cuz I, I actually, he text me and I text him back. Madam Clerk, if we can please have Mr. Joel Ramirez, Director Ramirez, which I believe that the IDs come through his department?
No, it's personnel ID.
Oh, it's a personnel. I thought it was the, he said city ID. Okay, so his city employee ID. Alright, so I'm, I'm sure it's a personnel matter, and Madam BA, you can definitely address Mr. Bilal Hakim. Mr. Bilal, I'm so sorry, I, I gave you wrong information, alright? I, I, I thought you were talking about the city ID, but now it's your city employee ID. I've just addressed Madam BA to address that issue as soon as possible. Well, the BA oversees personnel, okay? Okay, okay, very well. So, they'll definitely be reaching out to you. Madam BA will be doing that, okay? Thank you very much. With that said? Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. You look very lovely today, by the way.
Thank you.
Oh, one last thing I need to put on record. I'm sorry, Councilman. I wanna put something on record. Councilwoman Mendz stated that there are three at large, there's one for each ward. And at least I and the individual, I've been at, at large, I'm the senior at large, this is my third term. And I've always given respect to every council member in their ward. When there's issues being addressed in the ward, I go to the council person, and I indicate, and I let them know this is going on. Either work together, and I mean, there's no one here that can say that I haven't done that. I'll continue to do that, because I think it's important, and that's why there's three. There's six, one for each ward, and each council member can at least handle all, all six, or at least work with two council members, each, um, a council person at large. With that said, Madam, oh, one last thing. For the individuals that came here that indicated that I have a husband, can you please not do that and give false information out there? Mr. Henry Sosa is not my husband. Please don't kill my chances of finding myself a husband. With that I thought I would make you funny. They put it on record that I have a husband. Please don't do that to me. With that, Henry Sosa's a very good friend. With that said, Madam Clerk, Council President, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Mr. President?
I'm gonna be the godfather of the wedding.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Well, we heard a lot of concern from our resident. And only people who had answers are our administrat- administration. We have our Madam BA, Corporation Council right there. We could talk, or talk to talk, or talk all night, but we, we don't have any answer. I don't have any answers. So I would like, before I vote, actually, after I vote, Madam BA and Corporation Council, if you could give the residents some answers, whatever you have now, and any of the concern from the resident that you don't have the answer, you need to look into. Please look into it, and email all the council members. The Jesus family, also, Mr. Jackson, one of the young men who wanna be a police officer. If, if you have any answer right now, please provide to the audience and also the viewers who are watching. The one, the questions that you don't have any answer, please email us the answer later, and we will try to provide that to the residents as well. My vote is yes to close the public portion.
Thank you, Mr. President. My vote is yes. The vote is nine in favor, none against. The public portion of the regular meeting is now closed.
Madam BA?
Thank you, Council President. In particular, I'd like to speak to the issue with the individual who is here about the police roster. And while I cannot speak to specifics, this is a process that was not part of the city process. So let me take a step back. When employees, or when individuals want to join the police force, they go through the process, as we heard from the individual as part of the public portion, and that includes a psychological test. That is done by a third party, an outside vendor, that is not done by police officers in our department, it is not done by our police chief. That is actually a vendor who the council approves for that contract to be given out. After that, then that is how the process proceeds. If they decide that the, or they decide that individual is unfit, the recourse, as was noted, was an appeal to the Civil Service Commission. That is how this process went through. In particular, it's reviewed by the Medical Review Panel as part of the Civil Service Commission, not the City of Patterson. I know Councilman Udine was asking like what the department decided and why an individual was unfit. This is not a decision made by the city, it is a decision made by the Civil Service Commission. So Ms. Mohammed, you were misinformed that it was something that was on my desk, I had absolutely nothing to do with this situation. In fact, we just received the notification from the Civil Service Commission within the last week, not even a week ago, within the last week. And so at this point in time, we're looking at alternatives, if this is something that there are options, or if this is a final decision. In fact, from the Civil Service Commission, they call it a final administrative action. So I just want us to be clear, people can have their own opinions, but they can't have their own facts about processes. And so I just thank you for the opportunity to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Council President?
Are we closing the meeting?
We close the public portion. We're not gonna go back and forth, Councilman Jackson.
No, no, we're not, we're not passing that over. We have a current officer who just went through, who also was given a negative evaluation from the psychological, and that officer is now employed with the city. So she's gonna give false information to the public, I will not allow that. The letter that was written by the Civil Service, that by the same entity that she refers to, is addressed to her, it has her name on it. On that letter, it says, she must respond within ten days to any other decision in recourse. They are not the final decision makers, they gave a recommendation, then it goes back to the BA. We've had another officer who, we all, we know who this officer is, went through the same process, they went about, this is not an abnormal situation. Many people hire their own psychologists. So she's giving false information once again, because she is the BA. The BA is the signing authority, Ms. Mohammed, do not allow her to mislead you that way. The psychologist that this council hires is at the recommendation of the administration. They oversee that activity. We approve it based on the financial aspect of it. They present the quotes, they present the psychologist of suggestion through their recommendation. Now, if that is the case, let's look at some more facts. Let's pull the data of all the people, I'm speaking, of, let's pull the data of all the people who have been denied. Let's see how many of those people are not residents of this city, who are not African-American. Let's check that data, if we're checking data.
All right, thank you.
More to close?
Yes, we are, it's already closed, one second. One, one second.
He got me all confused.
One, one second, one second, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Mr. President.
Personally, I know somebody, which is not African-American, Bangali, who did not pass the psych test. So we keep instigating, instituting, is African-American, keep getting denied, that's not right either. Look at the fact, let's get a report from the, from the, from the administration as well, and see how many individuals in past year didn't pass the psych test.
Council President, not only that, look at the academy that graduate.
Council, Councilmember Liz, okay, the public portion is done. Madam Clerk, we do have an executive session now.
At eight-thirty, yes, sir.
Can we proceed with that?
Move to close?
No.
With item thirteen to seventeen to open the executive session?
Okay, Mr. President, Councilwoman Davila is saying, we don't need to close, we're still in the, in the regular meeting. So at this time, we'll take, we'll get into the executive session for item thirteen through seventeen, and I'll read those into the record.
Please.
Item number thirteen, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one five five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation claim in the matter of Jesus Diaz versus Celia Patterson, law resolution twenty-two five six four. Item number fourteen, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one five five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation claim in the matter of Louis Sorano versus Celia Patterson, law resolution twenty-two five six five. Item number fifteen, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one five five Market Street, discuss pending workers' compensation claim in the matter of Jonathan Palomino versus Celia Patterson, law resolution two-two five six six. Item number sixteen, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one five five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation claim in the matter of Melanie De La Cruz versus Celia Patterson, law resolution two-two five six seven. Item number seventeen, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one five five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation claim in the matter of Gregory Alston versus Celia Patterson, law resolution twenty-two five six eight. May I have a motion for item number thirteen through seventeen?
So move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Mimms. Roll call to open the executive session, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call to open the executive session for items thirteen through seventeen. Councilman Abdelaziz, Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Councilman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Mimms?
Before our vote, can we make sure all parties that are still in the room, be asked to go in the hallway for executive session, there's maybe about, oh, I'm just making sure. My vote is yes.
Yeah, Joan went and took care of it with Mr. Ming already. Oh, thank you. Miss Councilman Udine?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Councilman Villas?
The thing is that we're getting a lot of instruction from Councilman Abdelaziz, so we already getting used to it. My vote is yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Items thirteen through fourteen, the executive session is now open. Anyone who's present and has no affiliation with any executive matter may ask to vacate the room at this time, and reconvene in the council chambers after the closed session. Thank you very much. And Mr. Ming?
Thank you, please.
Okay, and Melinda, just give a couple seconds, Mr. President.